Six and the homeland of the Maytee. So on the agenda today, we have three presentations. One regarding Regional Transit Service Commission update, draft council policy number one, the public participation policy, and draft council policy number thirty-seven, social media policy for elected officials. Any modifications to the agenda from administration?
From administration.
Council? Okay, committee member. Move the agenda. Mr. Dowlett, thank you. Can you call a vote on that?
Aye.
Unanimous. Look at that, what a start for me. Unanimous vote.
Take a break.
Take a break? Yeah. Thanks for coming. Yeah, so let's move on to item number three A. So Regional Transit Services Commission update. We have Ms. Lewin here. Introduce from Ernst &amp; Young. So take it away, Ms. Lewin.
Good afternoon, committee members. I'm just here tonight, or this afternoon, I guess, to introduce Alan Tom from Ernst &amp; Young Global Limited. They are the consultant that will be working with the Regional Transit Services Commission transition team as they move through phase two of the work that was originally done back in twenty eighteen. So I'll just hand it over to Alan Tom at this time.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me this afternoon. My name is Alan Tom. I'm an associate partner with Ernst &amp; Young here in the Edmonton office. Lead our performance improvement practice. My role in terms of EY is supporting with the development of the RTSC is I lead all of the day-to-day engagement activities. So working with the transition team members, working team members, REY team, coordinating all the activities and really coordinating our specialists along the way. So happy to be here today and give you an update as to where things are heading to. I guess just quickly, the first thing I would say is first transition team meeting that we've been involved in was back in the end of February, on February twenty-first. The next meeting coming up for the transition team is this week, actually, on Thursday, March twenty-first. So really, this work is just getting, just getting moving and getting going. I'll go through some of the timeline here shortly, but I just wanted to kind of remind everybody in terms of what the objectives in terms of the RTSC are meant to accomplish. So that's around creating unified transit within the region, making mobility of citizens easier, making the movement of people across the region improved, and really making sure that's coordinated and making sure that it's affordable along the way. Primarily, the goals of the work ahead of us for the next number of months around helping to formulate the RTSC, the Regional Transit Service Commission, is around creating that operating framework, defining what the transit service delivery model is supposed to look like, what the funding and financial model to support that will look like, what the operating model will be to help stand that staff and operate it, really what the governance structures is around that organization, so that you know as a municipality and all the other stakeholders understand how you influence regional transit, how you have your say, how that is done in a collective manner, and how it is governed and managed for the decision-making process. Finally, the work over the next number of months has to make sure that the work done in formulating the RTSC meets the requirements of the Municipal Government Act. Ultimately, that is what the RTSC and application is done, and that's what stands up the RTSC and creates it as an entity. So today, the Regional Transit Service Commission isn't a legal entity. We have a transformation, or a, sorry, the transition team, which helps to manage the creation or the stand-up of the RTSC, but it's not a legal entity at this point. That is what will make it a legal entity at that point in time. So that's what we're working on to put together. I suppose as you go through that, the challenge is making sure that people's voices are heard at the table in the development of what the transit commission will look like, what services it may offer, and the longer-term vision and strategy for the commission, and how your interests as a municipality and how the rest of the region's interest kind of match and mesh to bring that together. Just a little bit of background, so there's been three phases to the project. The first phase was the establishment of the transition team, the signing on of the memorandum of understanding, and most recently, the adoption at the last meeting of the terms of reference, securing the government of Alberta funding to help go through this particular exercise. We're moving into phase two of that work now, which is to define the RTSC, help understand what services provided, as I mentioned, and get ready for that application to the government in order to stand up the RTSC. The third phase of the program, which is subsequent to this work and would be post-October, is meant to then create that application, obtain the approval from the government, create the RTSC under the act as an, as a legal entity, and then proceed to define the more detailed services and stand it up. If there's a transfer of assets, transfer of people, whatever parts of transit are being moved in from a, from a regional basis, and get the RTSC going. So that becomes phase three. So our work between a few weeks ago through to the end of October is that phase-two particular component. It's been broke up into two pieces. The first part of phase-two has been over the last four weeks to understand, we had a view as to what the work effort and what the tasks and appropriate activities are going to be for the next number of months through to the end of October. The work that we've done over the last little bit has been to further refine that with members from, working team members that have been delegated from various municipalities to refine what those specific activities are, get a better understanding of the current state of regional transit, understand perspective on how governance may work over the next number of months in formulating those strategies, how we engage with different individuals, what skills each municipality has in terms of those model creations around transit service delivery finance. So we're just concluding on that particular piece now. We actually will present a report to the transition team this coming Thursday to go through that, and then we'll move into the second part of phase-two, which is the actual work to define those particular models. Again, detailed current state assessment focusing on that transit service design, funding models, operating models, how it's going to be implemented. And I would say equally as important, and will probably require nearly as much effort as the technical sides, is the stakeholder engagement approach. So we recognize there's thirteen municipalities involved in this, and those are key stakeholders, but the users and the beneficiaries of transit go beyond the municipalities when you think about different stakeholders involved, whether they be universities, businesses, economic development organizations, et cetera. So there's a number of stakeholders that have to be worked through. We also have to make sure your voice is quite clearly heard through that, as well as the needs of the region. So the stakeholder activities will be significant as well. So that's the work between now and the end of October, and somewhat how it's been broken up between a couple of different phases of activity. What I'll just run through in terms of what we're trying to solve, so when you think about the transit vision, so what is a vision for the RTSC? And that's one of the first things that I'd get further refined. So clearly, there's already a broad understanding in terms of what a vision is for regional transit, but when you think about defining that more, we talk about more efficient delivery of coordinated services. We're talking about overall level of service that has to be achieved, economies of scope and scale, how do we achieve that? In order to stand up a commission, one of the things the government looks for is how is the delivery of transit services improved in the region to ridership, but also how does it impact costs of those riders? Is it more economical as well as an improved service delivery? Also, what are the costs that translate down to the municipality as well as you transfer in services and think about that model? New regional services that were previously not possible. So what opportunity is there to provide services to riders that don't exist today and possibly could not be delivered without the benefit of a regional commission to help do that through an economy-scale perspective? And finally, what are the social, environmental, and economic benefits to the entire region? One of the things you want to consider is what are those benefits, you know, with your municipality? We've heard from others. On a social front, how does it allow us to keep our population as we have our youth going to school? Can we keep them closer to home because they don't have to deal with transit the same? Do we have opportunities for our citizens to seek employment in other municipalities within the region without having to move to go find that employment? Or how can we attract people to our region if we need to have employment opportunities as well? So from a social perspective, that, how, what are the benefits in terms of economic growth? Again, if you can keep your people here and they're going to work but coming back and spending their money locally instead of moving away, some of those, you know, how do you keep your community kind of tight by having your citizens stay at home or continue to be part of the social fabric that they may want in Beaumont but might not be able to achieve if they have to move for work or other reasons or because of commuting needs? When you think about transit service-level guidelines, so what are those requirements? One of the things that has to be defined and people have to agree to around the commission is how do I know that my interests are going to be met in terms of minimum requirements of service delivery? How do I know that our citizens' expectations will be met along the way, and how can I influence that? So that's designed by setting the right kind of transit service guidelines. So when you look at that, as we go through and develop that work over the next number of months, well-developed service levels and guidelines, that has to be really, really clear to everybody. What are the expectations around those services? What type of concepts are we developing around transit? What are the best practices you would see both in Canada, North America, globally that help define that? How are you going to do the development, implementation, and performance monitoring as well? So it's good to set standards, but how do we know that they're being monitored? How do we know that performance is being measured? And if it's not hitting the expectations, how can we influence that if we're one part of a larger commission to make sure that your unique needs are recognized while it's on the, the needs of the region? So what are some of those transit service-level guidelines? Relevancy, so we have to ensure that service is consistent with participating municipality priorities. It has to be based on consultation, obviously, measurable, so quantified expectations for results, performance management, and a continuous process of improvement along the way. Consistency, so agreed-upon service levels, set of guidelines and delivery, and how are those best practices adopted? What you don't want to see is people in one region having a lower level of service of somebody in a different region, and everybody's participating in the transit commission. How is that managed over, say, the shorter term of startup to a more mature state of the commission, right? How do you continue to build those capabilities? And then, of course, you want to be ambitious but realistic. So you don't want to design a transit service commission that's good for two years from now because it'll be outdated by the time two years rolls around. It has to be nimble enough to be responsive to growing and changing trends, but at the same time have enough rigor around it that you can influence its shape as it progresses. Transparency is obviously critical for everybody around and continuously updated, so making sure those service standards are constantly monitored along the way. I think the other thing I just want to talk about is when you evaluate, what will certainly come is what's it going to cost, right? Everybody comes down to what's it going to cost and what do we get out of the commission? And what do we get for our ridership and our citizens? Take a look at that, we have to balance that against a number of frameworks. Obviously, the financial impact is one. The obvious one, transit user benefits. How does that improve for the transit users? What's the benefit for them? We have to take a look at that economic account. So what's the economic impact in terms of the municipality, and what's the economic impact for yourselves, and then what's the impact on the region? Community sustainability, we talked a little bit about that as well. How does it impact your own particular community to achieve your social framework you're looking for? And then the environmental account, so obviously greenhouse, but what does it do in terms of traffic congestion relieving that? How does it deal in terms of noise? And all the things that come with heavier impacts on our road and the infrastructure elements and building elements that come with that. So as we go through and do the business case and identify the cost, those are some of the different buckets of activities that have to be taken a look at. I'll just run through quickly here the high-level project structure. So we've essentially between now and October broken things out into that transit service delivery model. That runs pretty heavy for April through the middle part towards the end part of June from a reporting cycle and developing that out. That's key to define early because obviously, the financials will fall out of the transit service delivery model, the operating model, and how things are going to run in the implementation plan follow that. That model gets built through a series of workshops around service-level guidelines and then the high-level service design, also along with the vision, mission, and strategy. So there is a lot of work, I think, to do in the area of the vision and mission of the RTSC to get everybody aligned to what that's going to be, and then what are those service-level requirements? That's the point where we either have to come together or understand where the differences exist and how we manage through those particular differences. At the same time, we have to pull in financial considerations. People may have a model that they're aspirational to, but we have to have this in the first two years or three years or four years, and it may not be financially viable in the short term. Maybe it's more financially viable in the long term. So there's interactions there. Then we move into the operating model development. How's it going to govern? How's it going to run? How do you stand it up? And finally, we'll move in, that work runs kind of middle of June through to the end of the summer, but again, it's got influences early on. We recognize there's work over the summer, so there's a number of activities to start feeding that information in before that. Then we move into the funding and financials, which is midsummer through to the end of September. Along that, we drive the business case. Couple things in terms of the business case that have to be managed. There's the business case of the RTSC, what's it going to look like when it stands up? How does it deliver services, costs, et cetera? But there's also the business case that it has to be compared to. So we'll have heard comments, costs can't increase from what they are today. The reality is, is costs are going to increase for each municipality in some sense, one way or another. Some are holding off on infrastructure, some are holding, you know, bus barns and other, other facilities, some are holding off on acquisition of additional buses, some to deliver the services they want are going to have to define new routes, and those aren't being done. So the comparison is what would transit look like for the region and for the municipality if the RTSC doesn't exist? And those are the pieces that we have to match up together. Around all of that is the wrapper of stakeholder engagement and communications. So there will be a formal and robust plan of communicating upward and downward from working, from councils, working team, transition team members down into working team and upwards at the same time as we go through that. And also, how do we manage the stakeholder approach? Just a couple things in terms of reporting. The terms of reference does require quarterly reporting to councils, so we will make sure that a quarterly report is done into the councils. That's a minimum requirement, so completely up to this council in terms of what you want for Beaumont. And we'll work with the transition team members here to understand what that is for you, how we support transition team members in terms of carrying that message and preparing materials, and again, how the working team members kind of support that as well, because there's working team levels that work with us, and then we're reporting into the transition team, and ultimately, the transition team members' reports into council. And so we have a minimum quarterly reporting for the terms of reference, but really, it's about what you need to, in terms of engagement. The transition team meets every single month, and that's great. We'll feed a lot of information to that, but we're also going to introduce an interim report in between at the two-week mark in terms of, for transition team members, what's been happening for the last couple of weeks, what are we seeing, and then what's coming up in the next couple of weeks, just so it's not an onslaught at the end of every single month moving into a trend, moving into a transition team session. Just quickly, in terms of feedback mechanisms for transition teams and to understand how it works as a council. We will be working through working teams in terms of developing materials, plans, models. We will feed that back in through that reporting cycle and then through the sessions with the transition team once a month. Materials will come in advance, we'll workshop during that transition team session for people, and then we'll get feedback as well subsequent and go through an iterative process. So it's not like a one-and-done, I see this, have to make a decision, and we move on. We'll run through an iterative cycle, and so there's an opportunity to come back and understand what your needs as a council are and as a municipality, and then feed that back through the system and get into an iterative design approach. There will be milestones where there'll have to be decisions because we can't all kind of agree to transit service model, and then all of a sudden in September, people put up their hand and say, well, no, we're not going to do that model anymore, and it kind of derails the whole thing. So there will be some protocols along the way for, for decisions, and we will work through the transition team on that. The only other thing I would just add is in terms of that engagement approach, so engaging with the municipality and understanding how you want that process to run over the next number of months so that you're informed so that when decisions need to be made, your transition team members understand the intent of council, and transition team members can relay that into their working teams. We will define a unique stakeholder approach for whatever it is that you're looking for to manage, your requirements, your input and your involvement. One size doesn't fit all. We'll, we'll drive some common standards across all thirteen municipalities, so there's a level of, you know, a minimum level of consistency across the board, so we're not running into kind of surprises as we progress, but then we'll refine for whatever, whatever you're looking for. So really excited about it. It's the start, so it's very early days. The activities over the last four weeks have been meant to make sure that we know clearly what is required. It's a lot of work. It will take a lot of work from working team members that are dedicated to it, transit design, governance, those pieces, and it'll take commitment from the transition team members obviously as well, because they're carrying the torch on behalf of the municipalities, but it's an exciting time.
Perfect. So. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tom. Just before we get into the questions there, you covered a lot of information, like dates, times.
Yep.
So you do have a presentation in front of you that was shared previously. I assume that's public and we can share that with council, that kind of goes through the dates and highlights the ranges that you're talking about?
Yeah, so there's a couple. There's the one back from February twenty-first, which has been through transition team, so you'd be able to do, the one that is coming to transition team this Thursday would not be shared until, and some of that is what I'm reading off of here, so the, I would suggest until that meeting is passed.
Yeah, that's totally fair. So I'll make a commitment to just follow that around just so that people can see the dates that Mr. Tom was referencing, so thank you. Let's open up for questions. Who, who has some questions here?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, I got a bunch, but.
Yeah, just thanks for the, thanks for the presentation. I think the part that'll be most important for our residents is the cost at the end of the day, and it's going to take quite a few steps to get there, so yeah.
Can I respond a lot? It's like, absolutely. I think what'll be interesting in the conversation is how you get to the immediate cost versus the vision of what the longer-term benefit may be, and managing what could be, you know, what has the potential to be a gap possibly for a certain period of time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, Chair. Last one.
Chair's good. Sam's good.
Thank you for the presentation as well, Mr. Tom. You alluded to the key question I have is around how we're going to consult. Who actually determines how that consultation takes place? Is that in consultation with our representatives, or is that something that council decides or the administration? How will that decision be made about how we're going to consult?
Sure. So we would work in combination with the transition team members, so your representatives on the transition team, who would essentially carry your views, right, into that, into that approach. So when it comes to consulting with council, that would be however you choose to be consulted with, that would get relayed through the transition team members. That's the formal governance approach at this point in time, and that's how we would.
That's part of it. Clear on, it's the other consultation that the people.
The broader stakeholder group?
Is that something we need to do apart from? And that's something you'll be asking about. I actually, you work for EMRB?
We, no, we work for the transition team, so.
But who does the transition team come under? EMRB or nobody?
It's a, it's a stand-up commission.
Doesn't come under anybody.
Yeah, and.
Sorry.
Well, I mean, you really have to, you can speak, sorry. You go ahead, Mr. Tom.
It, it doesn't come under anybody. It's, it's the uniqueness. It's not part of the EMRB. It's got similar representation, obviously, to the EMRB, but it's not part of the EMRB. So it works under a memorandum of understanding. The transition team isn't a legal entity, but it guides this work. So it won't be a legal entity until if and when the transit commission is stood up. But it is the transition team that directs our activities. So we report directly to the transition team and the governance model. We don't, the, the grant by which the funds are managed to do this work is managed by the city of Edmonton because they need an individual, an organization on behalf, but we work for the transition team. And so they will, they will dictate how this, you know, and part of our plan as we get more clarity will be how do we go out and engage with different stakeholders? There's the engagement with your community, which as a council, you will have to decide how, and we can do that with you in terms of how we want to approach that particular engagement, so that we recognize the importance of council's involvement in that, and we're not off doing that on our own. There's also engagement with other stakeholders outside of municipalities, which is a different, which we will work in conjunction with the transition team to plan through as well.
Thank you. That's helpful. It's our discussion as well, we have to have.
Yeah, for clarity, so transition team member Bill Vailtonis and Mayor Exifisher on that transition team, and so, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that we collect the feedback, and Bill's going to go there on Thursday, and then we'll funnel that into the wider group, but bring that back, because ultimately, I think where the comment is going, and I'm sure this is the same across every municipality, is there's a lot going on, right? And, you know, we're trying to engage people. Only way this is going to be successful is if we engage people throughout the process. That's hard to do. Most of the time, people come right at the last minute when it's, hey, this is how much this is going to cost us, what's the impact to us, right? So I think where Council Barnhart is going there is, is how do we, how do we make sure our residents are up to speed throughout the process so that we don't just come in at the end of October and be like, hey, you want to join this commission, right? So absolutely something we need to, we need to consider, but I would consider that, that's on us, and we'll look to the transition team, to Ernst &amp; Young, to help supplement that, but I think that is, that's on us to be able to engage.
And the timing of it, that was my concern, is that we have a sense of the timeline so we know when to do that.
Yeah.
Not to do it too soon and not to do it.
Exactly. So by the end of October, it sounds like, is roughly when, when they'll be looking for municipalities to, to commit to this. Obviously, that's right around budget time, and so we'll, we'll have to consider all of that sort of thing. Other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Tom.
Just on where we're drawing our information from and expertise, so we go to your pedal with the, an ask on how they're running their regional systems.
We'll have a small ask. It's actually in Melbourne, has a very similar structure around Melbourne. We actually supported the work of consolidating those services and building out that model and still do to this day actually in its operations. So we'll bring them, and we'll actually look at running a bit of a speaker series as well, not, not only from a technical perspective, but also in terms of speaker series for transition teams, in terms of what is happening globally, but we supplement our team with transit specialists from around the globe when it comes to, when it comes to transit planning in a regional basis.
Okay. Yes. Mr. Tom, you had a, you've mentioned about the grant from the province. You have speak to what that is. How much is it costing us to go through this transition period?
Yeah, so the province granted three-point-seven million for the work to stand up the RTSC. So that's the amount of the grant, grants being managed by the city of Edmonton. We're just going through our, our work from a contractual basis managed for the first phase of activity, and we're just going through the budgeting process for the second stage, so that hasn't been finalized at this point. So I can't, I don't have any numbers to share with you from the component part of that, but the municipal funding aspect is, there's no funding from the municipalities to do this work. This is all funded through the grant money from the province.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Council Dowlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, don't mind, maybe too far down the road yet, but does the commission envision at some point, when they roll out regional transit, would roll it across all municipalities at the same time, was going to be phased in? Like, for example, these six municipalities have regional transit before the other eight or six on the overall area?
Yeah, so it's a good question and not defined yet. That is part of the work over, I'd say, April through to the early part of May would be to define what those service deliveries and what the likelihood, but the work through now and the end of October would define exactly that. I think we should have a good feeling as to how that staging may work by the time we get to the middle of May in terms of transit service. What we do know is it's a requirement when the commission is stood up, that everybody who's part of the commission sign off, sign on to it at that point in time. Whether they have to onboard their transit services at that point in time is up to the commission to work through, but if you had the municipality that said, well, I don't need it, or I'm not going to subscribe to it for another year from now, then if they didn't sign on to the commission, then it actually has to be reopened under the act, and it takes about ten to twelve months to refine it all to bring somebody else on board. So the nuance will be bringing the region on, but then figuring out the scaling of services and when services may be subscribed to. So they're two separate, they're two separate and distinct things. Signing on to the commission does not mean you necessarily have to sign on to services, and so what is the staging that fits for regional membership?
Okay. Thank you. Another one for me. You mentioned the provincial government has to approve this piece, and you just speak to what they're looking at in terms of affordability, and I think obviously the big question you kind of touched on before is, what is it costing us now? What is the impact to us going forward? That's a big part of what the province is doing to make sure it's kind of fair, I guess. You just speak to that, that process to, on how this gets ratified?
Yeah, and so it's a good question. I'll point out, there's only one other transit service commission in Alberta that falls under this act, and that's Bow Valley, which is obviously far different than what this commission would be for. That's more of a tourist movement with a much smaller group. So I would say that it's not really clearly defined the breadth and depth of what they will look for, so the government of Alberta will be engaged, both municipal affairs and the Ministry of Transportation, throughout this entire process, with the exception of the next few weeks, as they have stated. But as soon as that comes through, then they'll be engaged through the, through the entire process. But you're right, fundamentally, they want to know what's the cost impact and is it resulting in an increase of cost to municipalities, an increase in cost to ridership? Doesn't mean that if there's an increase, it's not approved, because it depends on what would reasonable increases be under, in the environment of there not being a commission. What's important to them is how does the governance work? How do you make sure that municipalities don't lose their voice in transit services? Yet at the same time, collectively, you're moving the region forward for transit service delivery, which may not always align to individual municipality preferences at given points in time. And of course, that's the challenge of a region. They will also understand, how is the, is it financially sustainable? So if you're rolling assets in, you're taking back debt, you're dealing with future borrowings or grants in terms of bus acquisitions, et cetera, transit acquisitions, is it self-sustaining? Can it manage itself? If it's going to fall short in revenues from ridership, then how are those shortfalls going to be funded? Is it up to municipalities? You know, as a collective, there theoretically should be better ways to access other alternative funding sources than individually. So can you change your funding models to attract different revenue sources? They will take a look at those components as well, typically on a three-year to five-year horizon. Those are the things they want to see. Is it sustainable? Is it providing at least the same service, if not an improved service? Is everybody agreed to the vision and mission? Is it nimble enough to look at forward-looking mobility of the region, multi-years down the road, not just five years down the road, 15, 20, 40 years down the road? And how do you keep that service delivery going?
Okay. Yeah, perfect. I got one more for you, and then one for Ms. Lewin. One of the most interesting discussions we've had so far is around whether we go as, need to make decisions unanimously, 50 plus one, that sort of thing. So we did let it go unanimous, which has its own complications. So could you just speak to the fact that, you know, in October, there are 13 municipalities that are participating in this? If 11 of them say, yeah, we're going forward with this, does that commission, is it stood up with the 11, and then, you know, the remaining two just choose not to participate? Could you just explain the difference between how we said unanimous here, but, you know, signing on, obviously not? So just put a background on that?
Yeah, it is a challenge. The terms of reference does take consensus, right? When it comes to moving through decisions. In terms of consensus for the Regional Transit Services Commission to be stood up, will be something that will be evaluated as it progresses based on feedback from the government. So again, they don't have a specific formula that would state 50 plus one or 80% of the ridership in the region.
Yeah.
I think it'll be evaluated closely as to how are we managing a collective within the region? And if we don't get to unanimous consent in terms of the models that are presented ultimately, then what does that look like for the benefits? So obviously, if you don't have enough signing up, either from a critical mass or from a regional perspective on a map, is it really your Regional Transit Services Commission? And if it isn't regional, then it may not pass the test, right? In terms of the Municipal Government Act, which is meant to support improved delivery within the region. Ultimately, that, there has to be improved delivery in the region, either now or within immediate line of sight to when that would occur. So that will be the reality of part of the test as we progress over the next number of months, is how do people who may be on different paths for transit? We know there's regional transit taking place already even without a commission, right? Everybody works together. You've got your informal networks for regional transit, others in different quadrants of the region do, lots of conversations take place. And so some of that occurs already. So the question will be, how much of that would be sustainable if a commission did come together? And when you run through the costs and the ridership and the impacts, will people stay together through the commission? So I think that's the reality, and that'll have to be tested as it goes. We'll have some early tests in terms of the consensus model, right? And if the transit service delivery guidelines don't get subscribed to by everybody, but by the majority, how do we manage that? So that's part of the test.
Thank you. Last question, Ms. Lewin. So our current system that we have, I think, runs till the end of 2020, is that correct? Can you just speak to kind of, I don't know, the wording is whether it's a contract to the end of 2020, but we've essentially committed to it until the end of 2020? The timing of this, right? Like, if this commission isn't, I mean, we're obviously hoping to get into it by the end of this year, but what happens if we're waiting for the commission to be fully stood up from the government and that sort of thing, and our commitment to that is up?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So right now, our contract with Edmonton Transit does go till the end of December 2020. There isn't, there is a clause in our current agreement that states that we can, year over year, add one year to the service contract and then negotiate fees at that time. So if, I guess, depending on when the commission was to come in, I know that Edmonton Transit would be, I guess, able to amend the agreement.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And be able to, you know, I guess, cut it short in order just to move into the commission, or if it needs a bit longer, then we can extend it to those dates.
Perfect, thank you. Any final questions from folks? Okay, thank you. Motion to accept the reporter's information. Ms. Barnhart, yeah? She's making noises.
Yes, I did that motion.
Motion, thank you, and vote on that. I assume your eye on that one was Barnhart? Yep. Good, thank you. Unanimous, two for two for me. Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for the time.
We'll certainly hear from you. Appreciate that. All right, item 3B. Draft council policy number one, public participation policy. Mr. Shiva Kumar.
Good evening, Chair and the members of council. Thank you for allowing me to present to you the public participation policy. This policy was originally adopted in July 24th, 2012, and right now it's coming back to the council for reviews since the demography has changed with our community. And the public participation, the depth of it has improvised to cater to the current needs. I'm sure you would have read the current public participation policy, and if you have any questions, I'll be ready here.
Pretty straightforward, thank you. Let's open up for questions. No questions here? Your worship?
Thank you very much for presenting tonight. That was, I've had a read-through both the policy and the guide. Can you just speak to, it tells us about inform and tell, but it doesn't really give us a guideline on what type of public participation would go to a particular project? Who decides that? And, because it seems pretty broad and pretty wide open to me.
Right. Going with IAP2, International Association of Public Participation, I'll give you a brief on what public participation is a process that involves the public in problem-solving or decision-making and uses public input to make sustainable decisions. The guide that you have in front of you talks about the public participation scope. The scope was designed to assist with the selection of degree of participation that defines the public's role, formulation of the public participation goal that drives the engagement process. So according to the IAP2's framework or standard we have informed, where we build awareness for the issue, and so the residents and stakeholders are aware of what this engagement or this project is about. There are various examples or various tools to attain that. The next process is, or next step is input or asking or consult. That's where we gather input from public to test ideas on concepts and clarify issues and identify possible solutions. The public participation scope in our current guide does have many tools that we currently use. Some of them are listed here. Then the next step is listening and learning or seeking ideas based on where we are at with the project and to foster a conversation between residents and stakeholders, stakeholders being council and administration as well, to explore the perspectives, goals, plan, concerns and expectations and possible solutions. The aim is to work together, to work together with the stakeholders and citizens in each aspect of the decision, including the development of recommendations and preferred solutions. So this is a broader overview of the spectrum, IAP2 spectrum, where we need to follow. But with all this work, various tools that we have, going back to your question, Mayor Stewart, what decides the level of participation is, we have to understand what is the end goal of this particular project or this public engagement? So understanding the goals, there are multiple factors that impact that as well, one of them being the timeline of the engagement. The second could be attributed to council's direction, and the third could be the resources available to, to provide an engagement framework to arrive at desired results. So those are the parameters that impact the decision-making process. But then what tools need to be used for what engagement is totally based on who the target audience is, who that stakeholder would be, at what depth and level of engagement is required from that particular group. I hope that answers your question.
I don't think quite. So I guess the ultimate question is, we'll use the transit as an example, right? Who determines whether we listen and learn, input, collaborate, ask? Like, I get all the tools that go with it.
Right.
But is this someone that comes to council and says, okay, an administration council, we work together, okay, and this particular project, we want it to be a collaborate, we want it to be an ask, right? Just, that's one thing that's kind of missing here, is how, who makes that decision?
Right. So currently, let's take transit as an example here, right? So if we were launching a new transit service, based on what kind of engagement we are at, what level of rolling out the transit services we are at, we would be trying to determine what, what kind of input are we looking at, right? If it's going to be, and again, that has to be related back to the processes, right? If it's something to do with MGA requirements, right? Or is it to do with and how and where council and public would be involved in that spectrum? So what we need to do, what we internally do is we, for an engagement, before arriving at any engagement process, we meet as an internal stakeholder group and work on, working on pre-engagement planning. And then we decide the timeline and we decide the right amount of techniques that we need to involve. So currently, it's been done based on what engagement process we are at, if we have to involve consultants, or if we have to involve different boards that we're working with. So we bring them in, we use their recommendations, we work with our tried and tested results from past engagements. And then that, all these factors guide us in choosing the right tools and techniques. And again, time being one of the important ones. Council's direction and decision is the most important, so we do follow that and try to involve, involve that in our planning processes.
Mayor, I was asking a bit clearer. Does council have any role in choosing one of the four?
So when you talk about inform and put, listen and collaborate, that's a wider spectrum of how the engagement needs to be done, whereas what our guiding principles are, you would see that council is actively involved as one of the three main target groups, that is public, administration and the council. So we all three have to work together to make an engagement process active, as an active conversation. So yes, the feedback received from council is important, based on where we are at with engagement and what we want to derive with a certain engagement, those would be guiding factors.
Council Barnhart, you had a?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to be clear, this is, there's an amendment to existing policy, is how it reads. What specifically has changed?
So the guiding principles, we had a hard look at guiding principles from 2012 and now, and the most important thing that we looked at was the community. The community as whole has changed. We have added more people, we are more diverse now. So the inclusivity in its, from its original statement has improved, we have made improvisation to that. So now it reads inclusivity and accessibility, ensuring public notice and participation is based on building trust and relationships, and that take into account the diversity of needs, abilities and viewpoints of members of the community. So what we want to do is, rather than just talking about inclusivity of including all the demographic, we are making efforts to involve those target groups wherever they are. So if that means, if you're talking about reaching out to youth, how do we reach out to youth? Rather than it being a checklist, we are actually making specific efforts to involve those groups. If we're talking about seniors, and if there is, how do we marry an online survey to an offline activation? So examples like that are the real-time examples of how do we include the community. The second thing that we looked at was evaluation and continual improvement. Since the community is dynamic and evolving, public participation is also dynamic and evolution. And that needs to have continual evolution and adjustments to improve and address the changing needs of the community. How we are doing that is, in past three years, we have worked on the analytics portion of it to see how our online activation is marrying with the offline activation. And what we do is, we do a post-engagement analysis on what worked for us, what did not work for us. So communications with other departments who are with the engagement processes, who are leading the engagement process, we work with them and come up with, with an analysis of how the engagement worked and what were the learning lessons from that and how we can improve and improvise that.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to go for anything to clarify?
I did, if you're okay, just wanted to.
Go ahead. I got John next, and then Steve.
One of the reasons we bring a policy like this or any document to the Canadian Hall is to allow us to walk our sleeves and get down and get at it. It allows us the opportunity to find out what you want. I don't know that we did that in the previous question, so I'm suggesting we might want to move back. And the question that was, what's council involved in, who makes the decision? Do you need more prescribed triggers than the state that? Do we want to eat that up in the policy? Because if that's the direction you want to give us, then?
That was my follow-up. Was, I was, yeah, because I was going to, and the example I use is, was the land use bylaw was probably done very much at collaborate versus a change in stone removal, which might be done at town. And so I would really like to know what type of, like, laundry list of, I might not say laundry list, but some, yeah, kind of a prescription for these types of things, if we're going to do this, these types of things, we're going to do that. And so that council and the public have a reasonable expectation of, okay, we're rolling out a new land use bylaw, we're going to collaborate with you and work together, we're going to build a new rec center, so we're going to listen and learn and seek ideas, things like that. Something, some level of what we can, what council and the public can expect to be ways to be consulted on. I think that was.
Steve?
Yeah, so the question I was going to ask to kind of tease it out was, what tool do you have to ensure that consistent approach is taken for required set of communications? As in, if we looked at the 10 things we most commonly communicate, and then, you know, what do we do? So to make sure we're going to be consistent every time. And then my suggestion was going to be similar to the mayor, as in, you know, the prescription. If this is happening, we're going to do this and this, that's, so we set a minimum standard, I guess. So we're going to do this and this. And if for some reason there's something else to add, then that would come up during the, you know, the work in the other portion of it.
Right. So I think what we don't want to get to is where we got to on an item last week where we pushed it back because we weren't comfortable there. Ideally, council knows that once something's come forward, that it's followed the process, and we don't need to question it because the consistency and all that sort of stuff, right? That's the ideal scenario we get to. I don't think we're still quite answered. The big question here is, is council, and so a couple of options, is council involved in choosing one of the four, right? So early on in a project, you're saying, hey, this is something that we're thinking about, we're thinking about going out with a recreation master plan. Where do you see this? Our recommendation is input, right? Are you okay with that, right? I think, because if we don't involve council before we get that, then at the end, we're going to say, well, you probably should have been at collaborate on this one, and then, right? So I would personally, and we're going around the horn here, but I would personally like to see some way of having council participate in that process, right? And so, and I'll expect, you know, administration to come back and talk about how much additional time and what that does to the piece. But I think the only way that we have integrity for us to be able to stand up there is that we know, okay, we signed off on the level that you were going to do, you've showed us the examples of how you're going to do that, you applied it consistently, so then when it comes for the final decision to us, we can be comfortable. And if we aren't, then we're just contradicting our own piece. So is that, thoughts on that? Steve?
Yeah, and just to follow on that is, we should be able to avoid the situation, you know, where we were at with the conversation last week, because this whole framework here, the residents will know what to expect, and we will know what to expect, and when it is triggered, when one of them is triggered, that means A, B, C, D, E, and then upfront, there's, it's clear and you put a one, so that's what I was hoping for this piece.
Okay.
Just as a suggestion by the Chair, that on our report format that we currently have, there's a space for stakeholder engagement and communication. And I'm familiar with that process where administration has come back and said, because I followed the IAP2 and the City of Edmonton as well, and then, let us know what you think. But I think council has the right to say, and should, if they think, no, we think different, to get it, and then whenever we report council to us, we know what you're thinking and can have that discussion if we think it's going in the right direction.
Yeah.
I think that mechanism could work, we could flesh that out a little bit, bring it back to council, make a recommendation that we believe that they have, and council in turn say, well, you know, why not this one? We think it's, we have this direction, provide a speculative.
Yeah, we need to take accountability back. We'll give you a quick answer on it. We can't go back to two weeks and try and figure this out and slow the whole process up, but I think a check-in is the key for us, or?
Yeah, that's the point. It's got to be nimble enough that it doesn't slow work down.
Yeah, yeah.
And work well enough that we're not waiting, you know, my things.
Yeah, and so that's the balance, right? That we're going to, and I think you're going to matter prescribe on every little decision that's made of where, right? And so I think we'll work to this together, but Council Van Newkirk, you had a question?
Yeah, well, we're still on this diagram here. I would, I would like to consider carrying, so in the first one, we have website and social media and examples. I would like to, you guys to batter on the idea of carrying that through to ask and see, but not collaborate, just because I know that that's one of the tools that I think we're going to be honing in on and doing some more with. So I can understand how you wouldn't have put it there, but I think our community is, while we keep hearing our community is very unique with some of the presence and some of the hits and the analytics compared. with some of the presence and some of the hits and the analytics compared to others in the region. I've heard a few times just say that the hits are through the roof, so I think we have to acknowledge that. And so my suggestion would be website and social media bullet point carries through to ask and see. If there's any good reason why not to, let me know in my circle of council. But I'd collaborate, I think, you know, like collaborate, you're getting your control of the sleeves up, right?
Right, so great suggestions here. What we need to do is have a look at the recommendations or the expectations of council on how to engage, you know, in pre-engagement sessions. So that guidance is good. We have a list of tools, like more than 54 tools available at our disposal, but we can't use everyone. It has to be a custom tailored solution. So I do agree, we can tweak the process a bit where we can hear from you what your level of expectations are. And then we can work, administration can work and come back and give you a realistic timeline of what it would entail and what would be those impacts. Going back to Counsel Van Newkirk's point of including certain tools, those tools are already there. It's just for examples only. So it depends on, depending on what kind of engagement and what kind of mode and medium we are using, we do involve those tools. But we have to be very careful on how we use social media in terms of gauging, because we need to have a tool and medium that we can measure and put some accountability towards. So we play it, we do use it based on what engagement we are at, but we have to be careful on using that particular medium.
Counsel Barnhart?
This is just sort of, thank you, Chair, but I just was looking at it's the social media policy that was mentioned. The very first sentence says, "Social media allows elected officials to engage in collaboration." So I don't know if you want to put it away that, because it's, maybe it's a different use of the word.
It's a different use of the word. Yeah, I think the point here is, you know... Input, right, doesn't prohibit you from informing people first, right? And so, just because it's not under input. So if you're asking for feedback, but you don't necessarily mean, okay, no social media. Like, I'd like you to consider and would assume you would, that you would pump it out through social media. Say, hey, we want to ask your opinion at these venues, right? Not saying, hey, social media, what do you think about this? Right, so just to build on where we're going there.
Just to give you a bit of feedback, I'll take you back to 2018, May of 2018, we launched a new platform, Let's Talk Beaumont. And the importance of this particular engagement platform is, it is based on the IAP2 engine and the engagement framework. What this platform does is it allows people to inform, tell and collaborate through different tools. Since the inception of this particular, or launch of this particular tool, we've had, we've had close to 8,000 site visits out of that 451 site registrations and 418 people have activated their account. And this is where we think we need more support from council on, whenever there's a project, you know, it guides the, guides the response, the user through the entire process. We have milestones where people understand where they're at with engagement and what would be those next steps for engagement. So please, please have a look at it and whenever you have that opportunity to work with your network and the community, please inform this. We want it to be organic so that there is an organic receptivity and uptake from the community, rather than pushing it out as a sponsored thing, which we have seen. So in one year, there has been an organic 8,000 visits here. Since then, we have added close to 15 projects, projects on that. So that is where we want people to drive meaningful conversation, is where we can, we can measure and have accountable, we can take accountable measures on our projects.
Other questions from folks? I got one point and one question, and Counsel Van Newkirk may ask my questions, I won't. Just a really quick point, on the executive summary. It says, "Beaumont administration is the body closest to its residents and carries responsibility." I'll just consider rewording that. Okay, I'll leave that with you. Sorry, on page 12 of 32, executive summary in the blue, the first, the very first sentence there.
Counsel, I was waiting, I asked me your suggestion to sort of clarify an expectation.
It just, it just reads a bit awkward. Yeah, "Beaumont's administration is the body closest to its residents and carries responsibility." Sorry, yeah, "body closest to its residents," you know, administration, council, it's a awkward phrase indicating concerns that, you know, administration is working directly. So I would just, I would even consider removing "body closest to its residents." I know what you're trying to say here, but it's just an awkward phrase.
I still haven't found it, you said the policy?
Sorry, no, 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 page of the executive summary.
Participation guide.
Page 12 of 32, or the first page, second page of the participation guide.
Yes, I'm not sure what that clause adds to the sentence, really.
Yeah, I think, I think I know the intention, but it's just, it's a bit strange. Yeah, Counsel Van Newkirk, did you have a question?
Yeah, it's kind of the same, not on this page, I guess, just bigger picture.
Yeah.
Ready to move on. So one of the things that I was hoping to get out of this whole process is something that I talked about on the campaign and I've told people that I would be asking for, and we'll see if there's support for it. But I'd like to go in and ask residents how they want to be communicated with. Because we consider, I continually hear and read the residents don't know of stuff and they're not aware of things. Just issues, policies that are in front of council. And I'm wondering, you know, I want to, I want to be able to say, public, we've asked you how you want to be engaged with and you said this, like, you suggested this and we considered it. But I think that in many accounts, we are just to not seek input on this policy as it's built in the spirit of publicly participating. I think that the long-term, the long-term effect of asking that question would far outweigh the efforts upfront right now, because we would be able to lean back, in my view, on this public participation policy, on the question that we asked. We would be able to pull up the input and say, this is the input we got when we asked. And, you know, these are the suggestions we got and this is how it all came together. I think it would be a really strong tool for council to be able to lean back on. So we're not groundhoging our communications all the time or when people are saying they're not aware, that we can say, well, these are all the things that we've done and in response, we've done this, this and this. So that's my, that's my ask.
Yeah, sir, thank you, Counsel Van Newkirk. Essentially what you're asking council here first is, where this is going to have to come back in front of us for a decision. So it's a good test of where do you see that? Is it, you know, are they going to, are they going to do some engagement or do we want them to inform and put, listen and learn and collaborate, right? So that's a question around the table here. Council, thoughts on that, aligned with that? Does that make sense to go out and ask the public how you want to be engaged? Any opposing views?
Just from experience, it's difficult to find one way that's going to work for everybody. You know, there's just so many. And I just, and I might say, don't do it, I think we have to, but I also think that it's a perennial issue. It, I don't know that you'll ever be finished yet. I'd like to think we could and we have to try. But honestly, communication takes so many different shapes and forms these days and different, different groups. As you said, the diversity and inclusion and how do you do that? We have to try, but I wouldn't hold this up too long in doing it. Again, it's asking for input, so that's perhaps you have...
Sir, if I may, through Chair and rest of the council here, we conduct a bi-annual or two, every two years, we conduct a survey through Banister Research, and that's the Citizen Satisfaction Survey. And we do ask that question on the effectiveness, effectiveness of communication method. So when we look at the 2017 result, we did a sample of 375 people from our community. And we saw that the uptake, when we talk about how people receive information, tools being Beaumont News, Beaumont Website, the communique, the brochures. We also included the new additional electronics signage on 50th Street. We've seen the numbers increase from previous year. So we've seen with the website, we've seen 89% uptake, whereas it was 84% in the prior year. Sorry, 73% in the prior year. So when we look at those hard numbers is what we look at, because this independent research organization is going out and collecting some more scientific research based on that sample size. What would be important is focusing on those numbers. And what we have done is we are focusing on the analytics on our website. So prior to our new website's launch, the previous website, we used to have 8,000, on average, 6,500 views per month. Now the number has increased to 38,000 on average. So we look at those numbers, we look at the content strategy, we look at what's working, we look at how our engagement is working online versus offline. So those are our guiding, guiding results or areas that helps us develop a better engagement plan and process. So when it comes down to the community, the community has, you can see variations in their responses throughout, throughout the 12-month season. So there's a spike in events activities. So if you ask a certain question, at that time, their results may, the results may be, I would not say influence, but results may be different when you ask the same question at a different time from our community on how they want to be engaged. One of the few ideas or items that is on our radar for this year is we are going to have mobile kiosks throughout our 13 events and engagement, events that we have throughout the community. We will have those mobile kiosks where people can volunteer to take those specific questions. So if we have, to give you an example, if you have Beaumont, Brighton and Beaumont, we'll have questions related to say, how do you like the service levels on cleaning, trail cleaning or snow prowling, right, stuff like that? So we can have those questions and those big questions, we can select those questions based on the big spectrum of the vision, right? So our strategic plans, if it's increasing service levels, we can ask those specific questions from our community. So that's coming our way.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from Counsel Van Newkirk is, this is going to be the, this is going to be the guideline for us, that we're going to stand up there and say, hey, you know, you, we absolutely do have input, great. So this is the guideline. I think what the suggestion is, go out and engage with the public and say, hey, what are your thoughts on this? Right, and I certainly support that. I take Counsel Barnhart's comment that we'll never get everything. But I think if we as council make this decision and sign off on this policy without asking the public on how they want to be engaged, then at the end of the day, and we say, oh, no, we informed you, but well, the public will come back and say, well, we didn't have a chance to engage on that process. So what I'm hearing, the recommendation from Counsel Van Newkirk, I certainly support that. I would, I would like to see, I think the right label on this is input or ask there, where to gather input from the public, to test ideas, concepts, clarify issues and identify possible solutions. I think that's a good test of implementing this. I don't see there as a need to, a rush to get this in. I think it's an incredibly important piece, it'll make us govern a lot more efficiently. But I would like to test this out and say, you know, hey Beaumont, right? We've got this policy, this is going to be the guideline for how we're going to engage with you over the next X amount of years. What do you think? Did we get it right? Where do you want to see changes, right? And then prior to bringing that back in front of council, I'd like to see the reports of that. I think, is that a fair summation?
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think that's a really good summation. And just in response to the analytics piece, despite, despite all of that, there's a large segment that we can continually hear from in Beaumont that is the, the I didn't know and I wasn't aware. And, you know, those residents are accessed through social media.
Right.
And the hits on the social media numbers that you provide show that. And so I think there's another conversation about strategy on how to do that. But for right now, I'd like to focus on asking the residents how they would like to be engaged.
Okay, comments on, I think you had a hand up, is it a comment on the...
Yeah, go ahead. So my question would be, we asked beginning to sort of give us the laundry list and put some framework around it. Do we want to see that before we say, take it out to the public? Just because too much, like, I don't know, maybe you want to see another draft before we send it out, like...
That's a good question, yeah. That's a good point. I was going to ask you, do you want to do that beforehand or you want to agree on the draft and then...
Because, yeah, so I haven't, I haven't heard too many major changes to this from around the room, unless other people are holding back and they're ready to jump and make some big changes, but... Was that, sorry?
I think asking for that laundry list is a major challenge.
Okay, so what you're trying to say here is, under informed, we've got examples, but you're looking, sorry, they say examples, fact sheets, storyboards, press releases. But what you're trying to say is, this type of issue, this is the type of thing that we... Okay. Counsel Van Newkirk?
Yeah, so just to go on that, what I was envisioning is another table that says, this type of communication, these types of things, open up a prescription. And I think, and I think you're probably bang on, is that we best take a stab at that before we ask for inputs. I think that's a good point. Something different to make a point on, if no one else is ready to go.
Oh, you had your hand up, did you have a comment?
Just a suggestion, we get first. It's a good idea to clarify the laundry list, we call it, for better charge.
Yeah, so let's close on that. Any opposing views to, on the idea of the laundry list? I think that's going to be incredibly hard to do.
That's my point, I'm going to say that I think it's getting into the weeds.
Yeah.
Because I think the discussion that the group has, whatever council discussion or administrative competition discussion happens around an issue, is where that's, adding around is to what level of input do we want? I don't know, maybe you should correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you can just say, here, this issue, we're going to use this. It's going to depend on the context around that issue and the timing and everything else, whether we're going to have another survey or whether we're going to do a focus group or... There's a lot of moving parts, so I feel the push and I know what you're trying to get at and I want to do communication right, but I'm feeling a bit like we're getting way into the weeds and this is what the administration is paid to do.
Yeah, I'll go there in a second. So Mike, I'm more aligned with you, Counsel Barnhart, and the laundry list. I don't think you're even going to be able to get it right. I think it's going to be too tough and then someone's going to point back and say, well, you said you were going to do this, right? If we want to change, right? It's just, if we put it in the, in the policy upfront, I think. So, yeah, those are my two cents, but Mike?
The comment I was going to make is going back to what Mr. Comer said earlier is there are touch points that will point us in a certain direction. We talked about time, you know, something has to be in place by next week. Talked about this, sorry, how much this certain topic is going to touch, how many people is it going to touch the whole community? Well, we should get out there, this is going to touch the soccer association, oh, that's going to... So I think that tables now is far off, keeping in mind that it may not be 100% prescriptive, but it should be able to point in some certain direction.
I was going to say, there has to be some type of...
Time resources.
Time resources, something to give us, some type of guide as to what's reasonable and expectation.
Counsel Van Newkirk and then Counsel Stapp, very emphatically put his hand up.
One of the things that we might consider is just all of the, all of the communications that are legislated. You know, that you get them in there and it says, for this, you do this, this and this. And these are minimums, right? Like, I want to be able to, I want to be able to have a tool there that residents can fall back on. And I think it's important to be able to do that, so.
Okay, Counsel Stapp?
Thank you, Chair. What I was thinking in response to that was that this sounds more like a set of criteria rather than a prescription. It's not a list of, I think, an example, it's not a list of, well, for a recreation center, you do this or for a smoking bylaw, you do that. It's more, does this last this long? Is the, are 10,000 people affected? Is the budget amount above this? I don't know, you'd have to set the criteria, but it's, and if it meets each of the, if it meets each of the standards, then you, then this is the recommended method of engagement.
Okay.
So the difficulty with something like this to me is that we want it to be specific, but we also want it to cover almost all cases. And we don't really know what's going to happen in a year's time, what issue we might be confronted with really, or we don't know all of them at least. So we have to make it quite generic. But then if it becomes too generic, then well, anything could fit anywhere, really. So you have to have some, some criteria that say, well, you know, the financial amount here is beyond this level, so therefore it has to have a higher level of method of engagement. Then it doesn't matter whether it's a...
Okay, I think the key comment there... Okay, I think the key comment there is, you talked about minimum requirements. The flexibility is key here. We can't be so prescribed. So I think we're all saying that. Maybe I'll just quickly ask administration, is it clear what we're asking you to compile? I'd hate to defer this for a month and you go away thinking about where you're going down and we're expecting something different. Is that, is that clear? Are we, are we clear on what we're asking for?
The expectation is clear, you know, talking and hearing the comments here on the table. There's, there's one thing that, you know, whenever at communications, when we have this opportunity to engage with the community, there's this entire elaborate engagement process that we, the tools that we can deploy. But again, you know, going back to those three factors, those factors become most important for us. Like this, this evening's, you know, we, we had a request for an engagement for a certain, that is going to be impacting a certain neighborhood. Now, how do we do that, right? So the first question right now is the timeline, right? What is the engagement timeline that they're looking for? And what, at what stage are they with the council? Or if it's a council erection, or if it's, if it's going to be an engagement process. For items like budget, that's annual, yes, we can, we can create a straight line parameter or formula where we can say, hey, this is what you're going to expect, right? So we start the engagement process in August, this is what it looks like, the next stage looks like this. But again, for any other engagement process that, that would come, because we are growing, it becomes really hard to nail down and coin down that these are the techniques that we would be employing. If administration was to go back and provide you that, we may have to refresh that formula or that engagement spectrum every time we go for engagement. So that's the challenge that we see, especially with the kind of engagement we've seen in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. It's growing. For communication, what we hear from people and what we hear from off-site activation points is that the community is being, getting tired of the engagement process, right? So we hear that as well. And then we, on the other hand, we also hear that, you know, I did not hear about that. So maybe the answer to, to this question is working with that particular group who's not, who's, or who are engage, engaging with the engagement process at the last stages. So I think, I think that's the target audience, rather than re-looking at providing a brick.
Sorry, what I'm hearing is, yes, you've got a good idea where we're at. Sorry, there are three hands around the room. Is there anything we need to add? I think you're here, Claire, do we need to add anything more on that piece to that?
No, I think, I think we've got good feedback.
Around the room, did you have anything specifically on?
Well, I was just saying, I'm not necessarily looking for the tactics that will get used. I mean, the straight line stuff that we do all the time, like budget that you use. But I'm looking more at what, what, like a criteria that will trigger a level of engagement.
Yeah, so essentially a resident can say, okay, this type of legislative bylaw is going to come up. This is roughly where you're going to be. Okay. Councilor Danlock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief thing, and sometimes about a table, I just think in my mind saying, well, for example, on the tell engagement, that would be, for example, level of snow clearing or amount of lawn cutting being done, whereas the bottom, clever could be a land use bylaw. You just have a separate column, you're saying tell would be solar removal, lawn cutting. Input would be an example of this. It could be very simple, just a couple of, pretty simple examples to tell people, oh, collaborate means something of this nature, whereas lawn cutting, we're just telling them. That has to be too complicated. But I like the idea of having some idea, when a person reads it, they'll say, oh, understand, they're just going to tell me about lawn cutting, they're going to collaborate with me on land use bylaw in my example.
Good, sounds good. So let's, I think we're clear on that one. New point, Councilman Newkirk?
Just Councilor Danlock, as ESP, I was going to say, keep it simple, perhaps add a third column in here with examples.
Perfect. Okay, so what we don't want to have done is going through this and then come back in a month and then excuse me, the whole, and, oh, we forgot to talk about these things. So are there any other issues with the, with the policy in front of us? Councilman Newkirk?
On the executive summary, if you wouldn't mind going back to that page, I just want to ask council, if council is prepared to own the statement that says council statement?
Page twelve of thirty-two?
We're asking committee.
Oh, yes, it comprises council, the council statement in the executive summary.
Yes. In the green bubble?
Yep.
Yes. You know, if I was that good question, I guess we're putting it out there, we should check. And that's what you're trying to do, thank you.
That's all I'm doing. Yeah, I'm fine with it, but I just figured we'd best have a look at the council statement, seeing if it says council statement. That was the time.
I was waiting for you to raise the big objection.
Yes.
So was I, like. Okay, any other comments on, on the policy itself? So basically, the recommend, it sounds like we're going to make, someone's going to make a motion to refer it back. But I just want, before we make that motion, I don't want to make sure, last column on comments on the policy. If that's the only change that comes back, we don't want to be back here debating the same words that hasn't changed.
Process wise, it doesn't mean.
It doesn't preclude us.
Something might not occur.
For sure, but I'd rather, from a time perspective, let's get all the comments in here. Okay, so does anyone want to make a, it sounds like we're kind of on that second motion. Anyone want to make a motion? Councilor Danlock?
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, your motion, if reading for is that committee of the whole refer the drafts, sorry, the draft council policy number one, public participation policy to administration for further review?
Yes.
Back to committee of the whole on.
I'm sorry, I knew we were making motions before, but now we're making motions at committee as well.
Correct, that's what I can confirm. That's what my legislative services.
This is new.
We've had, we've had.
Okay.
We'll have a little sidebar after. Yeah, there.
There was a change there, because I know I wasn't chair, anyway, we were just doing the agenda. And now suddenly we've got motions out.
I recommend that direction.
Thank you for the direction, Councilor Danlock.
Give it in a little sidebar after you're finished. I knew what you meant, but you didn't. I realize I was on the council.
That's okay. No, that's okay. I'm like Ron Burg, and you have to read the news, right? Okay. So it sounds like you've got the direction that you needed, no one jumped up there. Sounds like worship wanted to have a sidebar on that.
Yeah, so as long as we're good, then the item.
We're ready to go to three C, but project.
Yeah, no, there's, there's actually, just to facilitate the process, Ms. Winter did some digging. There's actually four things we can do in committee, is we can receive the agenda for information, or reports for any information, refer to administration or another committee, or we can refer to go to council for a final decision, or we can go in and out of camera. Those are the four motions that we can make to deal with these.
And so what I just said by making a motion, perfect. Okay. So thanks for that.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't understand what you just said.
Speak to that again.
These were process motions we could make here.
Yes.
We made a content motion.
No, we didn't.
To approve it?
No.
No, the first one you didn't make.
The motion was for information.
Okay.
Again, that's what I got here. Thank you.
Just want to be on the same page.
No, no, this is great. This is, we're all learning here, right? Good stuff. Thank you for that clarification. Item number three, C draft social media policy for elected officials, Mr. Kumar.
Didn't have a vote.
Not because.
We did vote on that, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, are you confused now?
So the first one, we had a motion.
I shouldn't have made that motion. I should have got myself there.
No, because, motion to receive reporters' information, and that was one of the items.
Okay.
Yeah, Bill's motion, did you call vote?
No, that was not the one.
Okay, call vote.
Call the vote to Bill's motion. unanimous.
Sorry, I just thought.
I'm sorry.
Like this at one point.
There was no conclusion there.
No, this is good, this is good. No, no, I'm three for three, I'm unanimous, I'm betting a hundred percent.
You're not going to vote no, just to.
Okay. What did you say, probably? Three C, draft social media policy.
Thank you, Chair, Monco Swain and rest of the council. The purpose of this report is to present the committee of whole with a draft policy to set direction and requirements for elected officials, based on the best practices of social media for elected officials to engage on social media platforms and to request direction from the committee as how to proceed. Some background on this is, in Canada, last year, we had the highest number of people, ninety-four percent of Canadians were using social media in twenty eighteen compared to seventy-seven percent of Americans. An estimated eighty-nine percent of Canadian internet users have social media accounts. Canadian, Canadians top five social media networks by user accounts are Facebook, being the top, Twitter and Instagram, and LinkedIn and Pinterest, as you're all aware. And there was a fair comment in the committee of the whole earlier that our community is actively involved on social media, just because of the demographic of our, of our community. We have thirty-three as an average age and it's a young community. Beaumont Talks is one of the micro sites where a lot of conversation happens, which a lot of us are aware of, because we are part of this community. The micro site or the micro group has increased from four thousand in twenty sixteen to almost ten thousand now. So yes, it's, it's important to hear the conversation that's happening. It's also important to see what other communities are doing. AUM and progressive municipalities are increasingly adopting social media best practices to guide and protect elected officials. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussions, because you've already gone through the social media policy.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Kumar here. Councilman Newkirk.
Start with a high level one first. We've got a few, a few policies that have been put in front of us. They've had the comment that has been reviewed by legal or had legal review or whatnot. Can you comment, does this policy had any legal review to see what weight it would, would stand in a test?
To be frank, what we have done is we've done research with the fourteen other municipalities on what's, what's being currently put in place for them, be it code of conduct, aligning of code of conduct or creating a policy on its own. So we've taken the, the base frame from, from all other, from the research, but no, it's not been forward to the legal yet.
Just a further question, is this, is this a policy that would require that?
Certainly.
The reason I ask is because I see there's a lot of, there's a lot of huge shelves and shoe shop lots in here, and there's a lot of, a lot of different diving boards and a lot of different pools and social media. And, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't you get involved in any of those and be contrary here and be in a position where you're defending yourself? I think we, I think we should, I would suggest it, I think. So that's just a high level, but I don't know if that's.
Yeah, once we get your input, before we bring this back to regular, I will state that in the report.
Thank you. Good question. Any other questions on social media? Councilor Danlock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the second attachment, I have it as, I have the split screen, I can't tell which page or whichever, but it's the second attachment, policy thirty-seven, the second page where it talks about elected officials shall refrain from, it has six bullet points there. The fourth bullet point says engaging in debate.
I'll, I'll slow you down here for a second, so we can all catch up.
If you don't mind, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're.
Further down.
Twenty-three, bullet three and four, I would assume. I think a lot of people will have highlighted that.
Yeah, right there, actually. So the fourth bullet, if elected officials shall refrain from, fourth bullet saying, engaging in debate or argument through unmoderated social media sites. Could we possibly enlighten or expand what that actually means? For example, if on, for example, I mentioned Beaumont Talks a moment ago, Chiva Sobol, if someone on Beaumont Talks says council should resign, I think a goofy example. But this is the thing here, normally we're not debating, we're not getting involved anyhow, it's my personal choice. But reading this policy, if that's, policy would suggest in my rather crude example, we would not be encouraged to engage in that, in that debate, because that would become a debate. Is that the intent of this, of this particular bullet? Am I reading it correctly, or is there another intent that I'm not aware of?
Sorry, through, through the chair to Councilor Danlock. The essence of this, this particular statement here, engaging in debate or argument through unmoderated social media sites, unmoderated is the key word here. We, we are referring to, if you are having or if you're engaging in a conversation in a group that's not moderated, what it means is you have to look at the policy statement of the group before you engage, because you need to have certain policy statement on your own Facebook profile, on how are the rules of engagement, on how you would want to engage, engage with the person in order to have a meaningful conversation or in order to gain feedback. So if it's not moderated, that's where it relates to, that you could not gauge where the entire conversation went and how it turned into a debate. And if you were to refer back to that conversation in order to use it as a guiding statement or a feedback, it would be hard for, for an individual to, to go back and find out the context of the debate.
So is Beaumont Talks moderated or unmoderated?
Thank you.
So we, so I would have to look into their moderation policies. You have to look into policy statement. If, if, I would not speak to just Beaumont Talks, because it's not moderated by us, we don't have any other influence, it's a private group on its own. There are moderators, group moderators, and they have certain policy where they remove group members on certain actions. So they can, they can either ban them, hide them or mute them. I cannot speak for them. But what I would say is, as elected officials, you all have your own pages, or some of them, or some of you all have your own pages. So I'm sure you would have your own rules of engagement with the public. So try and see if your rules of engagement or policy statement align with those unmoderated groups in order to have that conversation. The best way to have conversation is, if, if there is a conversation happening on a micro site, rather take them to the right source of information or take the conversation, conversation to a, to a group that you can better moderate, that, that would be your personal.
Yeah, so I think what, and going back to the initial comment from Councilman Newkirk here, is it says shall, right? So basically, I read this, is that if someone wants to say, I can't get into a debate or argument on social media sites. Now, do I want to do that? No, right? But I don't think we want to be that prescriptive in the policy. I suggest taking that out.
Yeah, I guess the question, what force and effect is that, how do we get into it?
Yeah, so I don't.
Can I comment on that?
Go ahead.
That language is in other social media policies for other municipalities, so it's in there. But actually, if you don't take it out, that's fine, we can solve it.
Yeah, so my, my point being is that if I look at this and I read that, and someone's asking me a question and tags me and says, hey, you know, what do you think about such and such, right? I'm looking at this going, I don't know if I can, I can't comment, right? And so that's the, that's the ambiguity, ambiguous, you know, the word I'm trying to say. Ambiguous, it's very ambiguous, that we're not quite sure, right? And now, there's a personal preference there on whether you want to get into that deep dark hole of those sites. And so that, what, the way it's reading right now is that it shall not, right? And that, that's unclear.
We, we could take that as a feedback, but also after this discussion and when we, when we go and update this policy and when we come back to the council, the intent is to align it with the code of conduct of, of the council. So you have to look at all the avenues where you actually communicate with the, with the constituent and what are the options and channels you opened. So it'll always refer back to that, but definitely we'll take that as a.
Yeah, I think we need to go around on that again. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to comment on that fourth bullet point, you focused on unmoderated. I actually focus on debate, because anytime someone asks a question and you get a response, someone could say that's a debate, right? Because then it invites another question and invites another back and forth. And so that's the word I actually focus on there. I was less focused on unmoderated and more focused on the fact that if that bullet stays, in my view, council does not use social media.
Can I just clarify, and maybe it is the intent that this covers all of our interaction on social media, but I thought the scope of this was when you're acting as council, like you have your personal life and your other council. personal life and you're not a councillor. I know it's hard to discriminate, don't you? But is this policy meant to imply that as a councillor, we're not on those talks, but aren't we able to be there as a citizen? That's, to me, that's my...
Right, so going back to the intent of this entire social media policy is, again, to help facilitate and protect when needed, right? So, when you are picking this engaging in debate or argument through an unmoderated social media sites, the intent was to, or the focus was your official social media handles. So, it was not your personal accounts.
And it's pretty hard when we have the same name in both places. So, you know, if you're on there, but you're coming from your own...
Right, but yeah, I guess the intent, though, is that if someone's asking me a question, if they tag me on that, I'll speak for myself, everyone gets tagged on these things. If someone asks me a question on it, right? And if it's a pretty simple question or answer to say, hey, you know, go to, let's talk Beaumont or, you know, go to this site where all the information is housed, right? I want to be able to do that comfortably and not have to worry that I'm contributing the policy here, right? Now, I know what you're trying to do, you're trying to encourage us not to go down and argue on issues and lots of stuff on that, but just, again, we're not gonna, you've got the point on that one. Any other comments on point four there before we move on? Any other comments on elected officials shall refrain from? I've got one, so I assume you go ahead.
Yeah, so it's no secret that I make council notes and like to put them out in number, bullet point number three basically cuts the legs out under me from doing that except for if I use them to only cut pieces out and didn't say what the outcomes were. But I really don't understand the purpose of that because we're in recorded meetings, we're in public, the decisions are final once we leave the room, so what does it matter? So, I just would like to have some comment from within on that.
Yeah, so to clarify, bullet point three, elected officials shall refrain from posting information on council meetings prior to their official release through the municipal minutes and proceedings.
Exactly. Municipal minutes and proceedings is far out, like there's a duty to consult, the window is gone for that. If we're sitting in a week for it to come out on paper.
Right away, way in here, again, this is your policy, we could put in what we heard, and I believe some of the research that Shiva has done is that before council walks out of the chambers, there is stuff plastered all over social media and it cuts the official spokesmen, can cut the official spokesman's legs a little bit, that's one of the reasons why that is in there, but that is entirely your choice.
So, let's talk about that, because it's an important point. So, the question comes, right? We walk out of here, decision's been made, someone says, hey, did you vote, yeah, your name for photo radar? What did it go, right? The way this policy says is, sorry, like, hold on, wait for the minutes to come out. And so, the intent there is to try and prop up the official spokesperson being the mayor, but I think where, I'll speak for myself, where I could find trouble with that is if someone asked me a question, it's a simple answer, they could be watching a recording as well, why couldn't they provide that information, right? So, that's my concern with that bullet point.
Specifically, it says post.
Yeah, so someone posts me a question and I post it back, right? Yeah. Go ahead.
If I may, Chair and rest of the council here, the intention of writing this, posting information on council meeting decisions prior to their official release through municipal minutes and proceedings, we've seen in past is, yes, you know, the timeliness, as council, you're looking at the timeliness of providing that information, but from administration, we are looking at the source of information that's available for eighteen thousand residents, the official channels that we've established and we are creating equity on it, right? It takes time to build equity on channels where you'll see X number of conversation going on if something is out there on Beaumont Talks and then, you know, you'll have the emotional responses and then you'll see that peak and then you'll see rationals and then somebody will refer and say, hey, by the way, did anyone actually go and see the official channel on what? So, what we're trying to do is we're trying to remove any instance of misinformation, rumors, and, because you may provide the right information, but by the time it reaches the tenth person, they may have twisted and added their own words. So, that's where we want to, as an administration, we want to have that correct verbiage or on the channels to help support you make that call.
I see where you're coming from, I'll speak to my point in a second, but councillor Barnhart.
Support leaving is in here and I understand that the timeliness of information, et cetera, but when I think of what happens at a meeting and the official minutes or the record of that meeting generally, maybe this is old school and it will change, but until the minutes are accepted by the group, they're not official and all of the discussion that happens doesn't end up in our minutes, it's in our heads. But when someone comes out and says something before those minutes are even published, there's room for error and Steve doesn't make errors, he's very, very good at that, one of us might not be. And I just think this protects all of us and provides us the clarity of saying, okay, here's the minutes, then you can share it officially. Doesn't mean you can't talk about the issues, but if a decision's been made and you're posting it on there before it's come out officially, I think that's jumping the gun. It just doesn't feel right to me.
Sure, so I'll speak to that then. I think you're handcuffing, you're handcuffing the job of councillors to engage with the public, right? If they're asking a simple question is how did the vote go, right? I don't want to say, look online at minute fifty-four dash twenty-three, right? I just want to be able to say, voted seven-two. It's obviously not going to be seven-two because there are only seven councillors, but so I totally get the point and, you know, the decision on how it got to, but the way that this reads right now, someone's going to ask me a question, I'm going to say, wait two weeks, maybe three weeks before council approves the minutes and then I'll be able to tell you, right? When everyone else has already seen it, right? So, I, yeah, my personal view is that this limits us from doing our job.
Number three or number four you were talking about?
That is number three.
That's about posting?
Posting information, yeah, so...
Okay, responding to questions.
To me, that's a post.
Different.
Yeah, and so that's... Yeah, so whether, so let's go down that hole just quickly. So, whether someone asks you a question, how did the vote go, right? And if I wrote back and said five-two, that's a post, right? So, I read that as a post. But also, you know, part of the commitments that we have made is to follow up with residents and one of the big issues that residents had was, I don't know what's really going on until the newspapers in here, they print it on the Tuesday, right? Following the, sorry, they print it on the Friday following the Tuesday meeting, that's pretty official, it's in the paper, they're speaking to it, but the way this is written, we can't speak to it for another two weeks until it's finalized, right? So, we have the newspaper doing it, we've got people watching it online, people in the audience that know the answer and I can't speak to it. So, that's my issue with it, Steve, and then Martin.
One suggestion, Mike, is, you know, when you look at bullet points one, two, five and six, those are hundred percent elected officials shall refrain from.
Yep.
When you look at three and four, council shall use discretion when something like that might be, because I wouldn't support either of those bullet points standing, staying in the policy with shall refrain from, because I believe there's a, I guess, I would support, here's how I would support those, or number three staying and number four, I don't support a whole bunch. If administration was able to and would commit to communication plans for key decisions as directed by council and say when this decision is made, there's a plan ready and it's ready to go and following the meeting proof it goes out, that sounds to me like a huge resource issue and that's probably the first thing I would hear back, but if administration would commit to timely communications, if we figured out a faster way to post minutes, which I don't know that it exists because it doesn't, which is two to three weeks is not, is not something that we should be able to wait for to be able to talk, it's not, that's not even a reality. We can buy a car in one day, we should be able to talk about a vote within an hour if it's happening, so that's my thoughts on that.
So, what we need to do is define proceeding, because it's previous, prior to their official release, misinformation and proceedings. So, what proceedings we want to use, I guess, is the question you're asking, because maybe part of that is, is, because I know we put in highlights from council meetings into that Friday paper right after Tuesday. So, is that...
It's not the official...
It's not the official, but it is a proceeding and it is announced.
Happens in the paper too. So, in papers before the minutes are...
I'm still on taking the whole bullet out. Go ahead.
Well, there's a principle that I think we need to consider here at the time, which is one source of truth. If everybody is posting their own versions of what happened at the meeting and then they're not quite in agreement because people perceive things differently or for whatever reason, then we're going to get rumors and confusion as well as the fact that if the source of truth is the town site where the minutes are posted as official, then I want to encourage people to go there. That's, you know, that's the right answer, guys. Somebody else posting on their own, I'm not getting you here in any way, maybe I've got something wrong or may have accidentally misrepresented something. It's, so there isn't, like I said, the motto is should be one source of truth, certainly as far as minutes and important decisions go. Yes, that's, the scope for argument about what constitutes proceeding or what doesn't.
So, to speak to that point, a lot of the comments are predicated with, you know, this is not the official version of the minutes and all that sort of stuff.
Yes.
But we'll use the photo radar example, so if you went back and said, okay, there's a discussion on February twenty-sixth and someone wanted to ask you about photo radar, what happened, technically you're not allowed to say anything and then all you can say is on March twelfth, when we amended this, it says, go to page two, it says moved by councillor Stoudt, that council does not approve continuing in favor councillor Stoudt, country Hendricks opposed, everyone listed defeated, and moved by mayor Stewart. So, it doesn't talk about anything else except for just the vote, right? And so, if we're just waiting for that, right, I get the debate around it, oh, yeah, councillor Stoudt, he was, you know, he presented all this sort of stuff, right? But all the minutes are going to say is the vote, right? And so, we're going to say, okay, wait three weeks, and all of a sudden, okay, now here's the vote and the minutes just say the vote. So, Steve, you want to...
Yeah, I guess I just would ask the committee how they would respond to, you know, me answering a question by saying, council's approved a policy that does not allow me to tell you what happened at our meeting tonight, go to forty-five minutes and thirty-two seconds of recording and watch for yourself. Thanks, have a good night. Because that's where we go. That's the reality of it. It's the complete reality of it. Posting notes or not, take that off the table, that's the reality of it. When you go home and just ask yourself how the public is going to perceive the transparency of what you're doing in this room if you can't talk about a decision that was recorded and put onto the computer recording in our system through our Facebook Live page, I don't think that sits well with residents.
Yeah, so I think it goes back to the code of conduct where we need to be accountable for the position that we're in, right? And if we are outside of what we said and we're misrepresenting the truth, then it's the code of conduct policy that comes into play, not the social media policy. Other thoughts? You're the official spokesperson of the community.
Um, yeah. Because you have to, like, I have a hard, I'm with you guys, I have a hard time not answering that question. Somebody asked me, how did you vote on this or what was the vote on this? Who voted against it or what was the discussion? Because it is all public record and it is online for everybody to view, I mean, that's going to keep everybody accountable, right? It's pretty hard to spin tales when you can go to the video.
So, I'll go to a straw poll, not making decisions here, councillor Barnhart, but just...
Can I just say one thing that's on my mind because I'm not on the same page here, but I'm still stuck on what I think this means versus what you interpret to me as answering questions about issues that have been made, decisions have been made at council, which I think is fine. What I thought that meant was posting information specifically about what happened at the meeting, kind of as a record of the meeting, which Steve had been doing. And I just, like, it, to me, it's not any of our jobs to be posting the minutes of the meeting or regurgitating what happened at the meeting, but responding and giving clarity to issues, I don't think there's any problem with that. So, I'm reading that differently than how I hear others reading it.
To be fair, I think part of the reason why residents, elected people here, so that they could, the struggle is that they didn't have access to the information. So, if you don't put out a summary of saying this is kind of what happened, right, then they're not going to ask questions about it, right? And that's the whole point of trying to be transparent is, if you're going back to the official minutes again, right, you can't read from that and understand what happened at the meeting. So, how are residents supposed to ask you questions about what's going on, right? If we went through first bylaw review, right, and then someone had a question on it, you're not going to get that information from the minutes. You need to provide, you don't need to, but part of the commitment is providing summaries of the meetings coming up, or, sorry, the meetings that had occurred. If you've got questions about it, let me know, right? So, yes, wait for the official minutes to show the vote and lots of stuff, but the minutes don't, they're not, they're not prescribed.
I'm not saying wait for the minutes, I'm saying on the issues. So, we aren't going to agree on this because I do see it differently and I don't want to debate it because I'm probably not going to change my mind on this one. But anyway, it just seems to me that we're...
Councillor Dan Newkirk.
Yeah, the word post and posting, the definition of that word has evolved. A post today is a piece of information, is attached in a box that physically goes on social media. So, the definition of that word has evolved and that, you know, posting information is information going up, but making a post that contains information, that's, you know, that's why, that's why I proceeded this whole conversation with the legal test is because I don't think this, aspects of this would hold up just the way they're put together right now, so.
Okay. So, we're hearing one kind of a post to take, it sounds like three, want to remove bullet point three. Any other, sorry, Martin, you were kind of, had a comment there, just, again, we don't want to leave here with ambiguity for her... Yeah. See, I got the word ambiguity right. Steve, I'm a whole premiere, let's hear from others, Perry, Martin, Bill, thoughts on keep the bullet in, keep it out?
Change the bullet. I'm just more into councillor Dan Newkirk's suggestion about taking those and making another paragraph going, elected officials shall use discretion or something when doing those things?
Except, the trouble is what's that actually mean? I mean, I'm fairly sure that Steve would say that he always uses discretion, so...
Yes.
As would I.
Or we can rely on...
Yes. Would I take, okay, would I take out fourth bullet point? Yeah. Would I take out third bullet point? I certainly think it needs to be reworded. I think as written there, it's unduly restrictive. I can, however, see, I think I can see a reason for having that in there.
Okay, so let me ask you a hypothetical question. If someone calls me up on the phone and says what's going on, did, how did the vote go? I'm allowed to say this is how it went, this is what happened because there's no policy that says against that, right? So, and I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to look at the different demographics, right? And yes, a post lasts forever and you can screenshot all that sort of stuff, but right now, A, I would, I won't go that dramatic, but if this policy came in as it is, I would just write back, call me and I'll tell you, right? Like, so, you know, I've said my piece, I don't need to reiterate it. Before I go to your councillor, I want to, Bill, Perry, any, I mean, maybe not, social media is probably not a big deal for you, but questions, concerns, actually, I shouldn't frame it that way, I'll frame it this way. Do you want to keep bullet point number three in or out?
Great question. I'm thinking here about a couple of different angles here and let me go to number four first, if you don't mind, just for a moment.
Absolutely.
I guess, I mentioned before, I use social media to push information out, I don't engage anybody in social media asking, they say I have a question, I don't agree with you, I'd say, great, give me a phone call. I don't want, I don't want to go beyond that, that's my personal choice. Other councillors may be more involved in a debate online. So, my concern is have this policy saying engage in debate. Let's say, for example, a citizen raises a concern on a post that I do and I decide to change my mind and engage that person for a couple back and forth innocently, that person then say, write a letter to the government saying, Minister Anderson, councillor Daniluk in my example here, has contributed the policy on social media because he engaged in a debate. he engaged in a debate. Where's it going to end? I'm just being facetious to make a point, saying, I'm engaging debate, I see why it's in there from one perspective, but part of me says, I'm not sure I like that because it's too open, someone wants to target a certain councillor for some reason, they could do that, I might, bit of extreme example, I get that, but that's what this is there to protect us from, it also worked against us, innocently, I think, at some points. On the third point, sir.
Interact on, on the fourth.
I'd like to see it, well, the next one's going to be suggestion of having a separate category, saying that councillors will use a higher level of discretion on points three and four, I can live with that, but if we, if we have to have an absolute answer, yes or no, I would say, number three, I could take it out, because I do think, I don't do what Steve does, but I don't want to curtail him from doing that, he should use his own discretion, and the code of conduct will govern his actions. I'm not saying you do anything wrong, Steve, don't misunderstand at all, but to handcuff a councillor, I think, my mind in favor of that, it is, I would be okay with three coming out, I would be okay with three staying in with a second category saying, councillor engage a high level of discretion or, or is that effect, I'd be okay with that. So number four, I think it should be taken out, I'm worried about somebody using that against a councillor who's replied back innocently, one or two lines, and it became a debate in that person's mind, when it's not a debate at all. I'm worried about it working against and not helping us.
All right, part of that. Those two items might specifically be good to get a quick legal opinion on, what's the force in effect and how we can cover ourselves.
So again, code of conduct, that's how that we manage, right? Whether we're online, whether on the phone, whether we're through email, that code of conduct is the way that we manage ourselves as, as councillors, right? So I think that's the policy that refrains us from posting decisions that aren't accurate or that sort of thing, right? So again, I, I would hope we could get to, not consensus, it doesn't look like we're going to get to, but we need to give direction here, removing three and four and relying on code of conduct. Yeah, I just, I don't have to call on you, but like, do you have any comments on, on this?
Yeah, and I'll, just back to, when I got started, we had a telex machine here, we've come a long ways from that, but every councillor had the same issue regarding communication, who speaks for the council, speak as one voice, there's always the same refrain, over and over and over again. And so I'm still with the speak as one voice, no matter what decision, which way it goes, doesn't matter, and it's usually the memory, right? And we had at the beginning where people were sending us asks and everybody's replying, and we finally got that down to just the mayor sending an email back saying, I'm speaking, and usually it was a letter that came out of the event. And then we also, at one point, when this whole social media thing started, we engaged people to say, okay, you deal with all this social media stuff, all these questions and comments, and, you know, so we don't have to, but, but this council's been different, and, you know, we're also fully engaged, and I'd love to see what it does to people, right? Councillors, I've seen what it did to some past councillors, you know, it's not good over time, it wears them down, eats them up, and takes them places where, it's unfortunate, I think. So, and you've got history, then it's lost its place, right? So I don't want that for me.
Yep.
I don't want somebody to come back and say, you said that that day, CNN's reporting this back in 2002, right? This was your position. I don't want that. I want whatever I did in here, in a set of minutes, it's gone, and that's the end. But that's me.
Yep.
We have a social, we have a code of conduct, just hanging on the wall here, and it laid out exactly what your roles and responsibilities are. I wouldn't even have this, I just, so what? Like, that's the code of conduct. You want to tie it to social media, you want to tie it to me walking to SOBs, talking to somebody, or somebody's making a phone call, I still got the old fashioned phone call package, I get my round of people that attend me, they're the ones that also come to the budget meetings, by the way. I get those calls, and I've had two hour sessions. Do I post my brain into what this media piece says as to how I'm answering those questions?
Yeah.
Probably not.
So what I'm hearing is that you personally don't use it, but I'm taking.
I wouldn't have a policy, it's just, we have a conduct policy, and that's what you're supposed to apply yourself to, no matter if you're walking, talking, posting, tweeting, on the phone calling, whatever.
Okay, so, good, thank you, appreciate the comments, code of conduct, bang on.
One last point.
One last point.
Thank you for reminding me of that, again, the one voice speaking as for council. So this then changes responding on behalf of council. That, I guess that's responding and posting information as a councillor, if that was worded that way, that I could live with that, but as council meeting decisions, that to me is the idea, an official job of the council, not a person to take that on, unless we have delegated that person that responsibility to do so. So perhaps it's a order change that I need in here, but an individual councillor, again, code of conduct chooses to do that, that's, that's fine, but the official record of the council meetings and the official response from council, council decisions, may or council as a whole through the minutes, so I really do believe that that's fundamental in terms of the communication.
Okay, so I'm hearing, remove from, remove the bullet point three and four, from, and correct me if I'm wrong, but from John, myself, Bill, Steve, Perry, kind of, doesn't really matter, you want to take.
No, but the code, I think you, you place the code of conduct on top of this.
Yeah, so the code of conduct is on top of everything.
It applies.
Yeah. So I'm hearing other, other views on that point, I think we can, we can move off.
Yep.
I had a question on page 27, 6A.
6A.
Says, members must not.
This is part of the third.
Sorry.
This is code of conduct.
Go.
This is the code of conduct, let's come, I, I, this is a question on, on what it, what it means.
Six.
Six one.
Six one? There's no A.
Six is respecting the decision making process.
On page 27?
Yeah, it's 27, there is no six, and six three then.
Oh, sorry, sorry, page 27, eight, six, A.
Eight, six, A.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Sorry, and it's just a general question, I appreciate, this is the code of conduct policy, what's the intent, like, involve themselves in matters of administration, which fall under jurisdiction of the CAO? So again, I don't want to, I don't want to re-go through this thing, but I just, a question, if someone asked me a question that is, that is, hey, what about the snow clearing, right? Again, that's administrative for you to, that's your jurisdiction of snow clearing, is that, is that intent there?
The intent there is to support the language in the MGA, to clearly advise what the CAO's jurisdiction is versus councils, and the intent is that you're not out there directing or snow people to go to a different street.
Thank you. Just got flagged.
Just move the signs.
Okay. So, any other comments on, on the policy, I apologize for moving back off, but on the social media policy itself?
No.
Okay, so we've got two options here, one, we've had, I think you've got the direction on the, the minor changes, I don't think we need to refer this back for further review, I think, I think we can move for our decision, so is anyone wanting to make a motion that, that committed the whole, here we go, that committed the whole, refer the draft social media policy for elected officials to council for approval?
So we do vote on this, and then we do not agree with what you just said, the vote no, is that correct?
Correct. The mayor beat you to it, sorry. So call the vote? Yes, no, thank you, six one, my streak is over.
I'm going to crack at this when it comes to decisions.
I know, but I just want, I just want to check in the process, I've stated my opinion.
Okay, close, it's closed session, there are no closed items, information items, anyone have any other questions that want to ask? Go ahead, councillor Stout.
I'll ask a quick question, and, well, not really a question, a comment, yes, a question. How many of you are going to come to the workshop for the Luke and District Regional West Management Authority, maybe becoming a commission?
What, when is it?
April 17th.
I think I put it in my calendar.
It's on Teams now.
I said yes.
But I think I'm, I think councillor Bonkart and I are the only ones that responded, you don't have to answer me now.
Is that the all day rule?
No, it's not all day.
Which one's all day?
It doesn't exist.
I don't think it is all day.
So it's six o'clock.
Okay.
In the June.
I'm not sure that decided on the venue.
So I can get it early in 16?
I think it would be in the, in the civic centre, though.
Okay, I guess it may be, but I'll confirm. I have two events that make, so I'll let you know, depends on how many have you got on.
Okay, so, any other informational items? Okay, I will at 7:01 PM declare the meeting adjourned.